Now, can you... ...talk to someone here? Okay. Okay, yes, this is our meeting. Our floor. Is he here or asleep?
Yes.
Okay.
Could be.
Anything, I'm just gonna read your name.
I'm in here.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, uh... Councilor Harvey. Okay, how... You're a little fast on the draw, but I know. Can you, uh, commit those instructions that you have to give me? You know? On the phone? Quarters and numbers. Damn. Huh. Thanks, everybody. That's all I'm gonna do. Okay. All right. Our start fifty-eight, I believe we're gonna be in the start right at six. I know we have enough that's gonna have a call, so we'll be in the start right at six o'clock. That's great. I'll keep on screen, looking on our home page. Good evening, uh... Uh, good evening, everybody. Uh, the time is now six o'clock, uh, P. M. Uh, and at this time, uh, this is our quarter, uh, discussion of the, uh, of the Selma, uh...
This meeting is only recorded.
Uh, again, the time is now six o'clock, uh, sharp. And we are going to begin our, uh, meeting. Uh, and at this time, uh, we're gonna ask that Reverend Colin Webb, uh, please provide us with the indication for this. Uh, so, soon ago, we thank you for this time of share. We thank you for your holy and divine presence. You are an awesome God. Thank you for Jesus. God on power as well, and share this with us where I stand. Thank you for your Holy Spirit that guides us and gives us your holy and divine presence. God, our mayor and our city council right now, because they have been called for such a time as this to lead the citizens of Selma, countless darkness and into light. Bless them, Lord God, empower them and equip them for the, the call that you have placed on them for such a time as this. And we'll be so grateful to keep you the glory, to give you the honor. In Jesus' message, thank you, pray. And if you believe it, say amen. 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 Thank you, Reverend Webb, we appreciate that. All right, well, uh, at this time, we're gonna do the pledge of allegiance. Uh, I know you may not feel glad, but we're gonna ask you to put your hand in your heart and do the pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance to the... Amen. It's to the Republicans. One name. I'm sorry. Thank you, everybody. Well, tonight's meeting is a special call meeting, uh, of the Selma City Council. And the purpose of this meeting, uh, is only for us to, uh, receive the mayor's report. So, we're very grateful tonight that we have the mayor of the city of Selma present with us to provide us, uh, with the mayor's report. So, without further ado, no more of these talking. We're gonna turn it over to our speed mayor, Mayor Jenny Purvis-Johnson, Mayor Purvis.
Good evening, uh, I just, uh, wanted to, uh, uh, say good evening to everyone. Wanted to let you know how much, uh, I'm, I'm looking forward to sharing in this meeting. I have, uh, just a few items that I want, that really need to cover, uh, during this session. Uh, and, uh, the first one would be to address some budget amendments. Understand that, uh, uh, that I, uh, just like the rest of us received a modified, uh, budget on, on the sixth of, uh, which is last week. Have not had a chance to go through the whole budget, but there are some critical things that need to be addressed in the immediate. So, I want to... Dan, you... You have a question?
Uh, Mayor, I'm very sorry, I raised my hand because the clerk reminded me that I forgot that we drew the roll call. I'm so sorry. I'm basically...
No problem.
Uh, Madam Clerk, will you please do the roll call? I'm very sorry. Madam Clerk?
May the meeting...
Okay.
She may be.
She might be muted. Well, you know, that's just, uh, apology, uh, probably was. All right?
President, President Yar...
President.
Councilor Harvey?
Here.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Where is she?
Councilman Carmichael?
Present.
Councilwoman Jane?
Here.
Councilman Randolph? Councilman Randolph? Councilman Dimson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas? Councilwoman Thomas? Councilman Johnson?
Yes. Uh, Council Randolph, present, I was on mute.
Okay, Councilwoman Thomas, are you there?
She's saying all, uh, back, yeah, she was on earlier, uh, Madam Clerk, uh, so, uh, if she...
Yes.
She's... Okay. Great, thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk, and again, my apologies, Madam Clerk, uh, please proceed, sir. I'm very disappointed.
No, no problem. Um, there, there are several items I wanna cover. Only, uh, one item that I'm really interested in getting some decisions from the council on, and that's the budget amendments that I'll be proposing. Um, and we'll get into that in just a second. Also, I want to kinda do a briefing with the hurricane, the data status. I'm just meeting with the Public, uh, Works Committee today. And, uh, want to just kinda share some additional information about that, where we are. Uh, and also, I want to have a discussion, do, uh, some listening from council members as it relates to the appointment policy discussions. It is a hot topic in the community, and I think it's time for us to begin to have a conversation. Uh, and, uh, so hopefully we can get, I can get a chance to understand the position of council members, so that we can move forward on that. Uh, and then finally, there is an ordinance in place, authorizing council, because there is assigned contracts. Uh, I want to have a conversation about that as well. Not looking for a decision, uh, but just to have a contract, so that we can get some clarification on where everyone stands on these issues. Um, especially to, uh, the issue of the budget commitments. Uh, let me just, uh, switch over here. There is a, uh, resolution that has been passed, prepared, uh, on the issue received before you. Uh, whereas the city, uh, the, the city council of Selma, Alabama's authorized pursuit to section eleven forty-three fifty-six, code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five, managing control of finances of the city of Selma. Whereas, the city council has approved and passed a budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Whereas, the mayor of Selma has to careful and study review and assessment of the office of mayor, personnel, code enforcement, and planning development budgets for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, uh, for the sake of being able to effectively and efficiently, uh, accomplish the objectives and goals of this office, request the city council approve amendments as, as presented, uh, in the attached, which here too now therefore be resolved by the city council of the city of Selma, Alabama, that by a majority vote, uh, the budget of the office of mayor, personnel, code enforcement, and planning development are hereby amended, of course, with the request of the mayor. And then there is a signature page. I'm asking that you would consider, uh, this resolution, uh, as it is, uh, as, as it is, as it is presented here. And, uh, uh, so, without... Open on just a second, see what this has. This is strange. While the preparation, something would go wrong with you. Just a second. This. It's out here. Shit, this trucker. Okay. All right, we're back, you got it? All right. Everyone see it? Sorry about that. I knew we were gonna have to do a rotation on this, because, uh, the budget is actually, uh, uh, landscape, and so we're gonna, uh, just pass it. One of the things that, uh, uh, there are a couple of, there are several exhibits here that I wanna share with you, so you can get a good feel of where we're coming from. Um, this is, pages from the actual budget that's been, that was approved by the previous council, uh, for the office of mayor. And what you note is that this budget simply, uh, uh, approved the previous year's budget. In this budget, uh, the position of the chief of staff was abolished. And, uh, there was also a public relations position that was abolished, uh, which means that the personnel portion of the budget does not include what I would call an executive assistant. Uh, and it does not adequately support, uh, an administrative assistant. And so, what you will see, uh, in here is what's actually in place right now. This is the pages of the personnel portion of the mayor's office budget. And you will see that this page still has incorrect names. Uh, remember those same issues? This is what the council actually is operating from, uh, to date. But it actually shows, uh, the, the, uh, the salary and, uh, and, and how the breakdown on the vehicle allowance, this benefits, and wages. Uh, this is what you are currently operating under. Uh, if you go down, if I go down to the next page, this is what I am proposing that the council would approve, uh, to amend the existing budget, uh, to reflect what you see here. Twenty twenty-one adopted budget, which is what you're working on, that was amended by the previous council, and it was adopted and amended just prior to them leaving office. They did an amendment on this budget. Uh, the twenty twenty-one proposed budget that I'm proposing includes the executive assistant is reinstated, that position is reinstated. I am not referring to it as a chief of staff. I'm referring to it as an executive assistant to the mayor, and it's added. And the consequence of that are increases in FICA, employment insurance, retirement, and the, uh, employment life insurance, and so that's why you see these things highlighted. Also, you will see that this particular line item in the prior budget for office and miscellaneous expenses was, uh, was, uh, uh, defeated. And I've added two thousand dollars in there for office supplies, because we need to get started. Also, you see a travel budget, uh, that's was set at ten thousand dollars. I have reduced that to five thousand dollars, with COVID being the way it is. There's not gonna be much travel going on, uh, if any, but I suspect some, but not that much. Finally, if you were to visit the office of mayor, you will see we are in dire need of furniture. Uh, the secretary's desk is just disposable, it does not represent, uh, the city of Selma. And so, we need to get some office furniture in place, and I put an appropriation in for that. That represents about a seventy-four thousand dollar, you know, seventy-five thousand dollar increase in the mayor's budget. Uh, and the second, uh, item that I am sharing with you, uh, is the, uh, uh... The office of personnel. The office of personnel, uh, it's the current budget, the budget that you're operating under. This is what it has, uh, is showing. It was, uh, adopted, amended, if you will, at eighty-eight thousand, uh, four hundred and sixty-two dollars. There was a fourteen thousand, five hundred and eighty-four dollar increase. Uh, and that increase was the consequence of, uh, a change, uh, approved by the council, uh, by the previous council, the insurance analyst to a benefit manager. And then they defunded the director's position, uh, in the prior budget. So, currently, the personnel department does not have funding for a personnel director. Uh, this needs to be corrected. If we're going to hire the people that we need, we really need good leadership in that office. And so, this is critical, another critical item that I am, uh, asking the council to consider. You will see here, uh, this is the personnel portion of that budget that you're currently operating under. You see there's a defunding of the director of the personnel office position. There is no money there for it. And you also see here where that, uh, that increase took place, fourteen thousand dollars for an employee. Uh, and I will add that when I spoke to the employee about this, she actually, and she didn't know about this increase. So, this happened by the previous council. I don't know the specifics of it, the details of it, have not seen the minutes or any documentation specific to it. But it has, it, uh, the, uh, it is my understanding that it's already hit the, uh, uh, the, uh, the system. Uh, so, but we'll, we'll have to look into that further. Uh, now, what, what, what I am proposing, this is, uh, this is... So, what you see here is actually the, we're adding the, uh... We want to add the personnel directors, uh, to, uh, to the, to the, uh, to the, to the budget. See, here we go. Okay, and then you see the code enforcement piece, the code enforcement. Uh, the code enforcement, if you look at the prior year code enforcement budget, there aren't no funds at all in that budget. Uh, code enforcement is virtually been eliminated. Uh, it has a zero budget. Uh, we wonder why our code enforcement department is not functioning? It's because it doesn't exist. Uh, code enforcers are actually working out of public works. And so, if we are going to do what we need to do with code enforcement, we need to resurrect that office and fully staff it. And so, that's what this represents, a staffing of the code enforcement department. Uh, then, uh, you also see, uh, in here, the, uh, uh... This is, this is what code enforcement is actually, this is what its budget looks like in the budget document that you currently have, the one that you're currently operating from. When you look at, this is what you will see, uh, under the code enforcement section of blank page. Uh, and so, we want to go ahead and get that refunded. Uh, then, uh, on the personnel, uh, the personnel director, I don't know how many got out of order, but they did some kind of wait when I scanned them. Uh, but the personnel director, actually, uh, when we add a personnel director's position back into, into the office, uh, that would increase this budget about a hundred and fifty-one thousand plus the benefits, uh, you will see a difference of about seventy-eight thousand dollars, uh, for that person. Uh... And then finally, the planning and development office. Uh, planning and development office is, is the heartbeat of our revenue stream beyond taxes. And, uh, it is the heartbeat of our restricted, uh, restricted revenue source. And right now, uh, we have, uh, Henry Thompson, who is running that department, and he's literally running himself ragged. Henry is a great guy, I've had many conversations, love working with him. Uh, and he, uh, he is a do or be. Uh, but we need to actually change this situation and get some additional, uh, 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 top level help in that office, so that we can pursue all of the grant opportunities and funding opportunities that are out there for us. Uh, and Henry understands, uh, this, and is on board with what we're trying to get done. And so, what we're proposing is that we add a, an, uh, an assistant director's position, uh, to the planning and development office, so that we can then begin to get, uh, uh, the executive level or the C-level attention that's needed. Henry can continue to work on those detailed things that he has been working on and has mastered in that department. Those are the things that I'm asking that you would consider, uh, in, uh, this evening's, uh, appropriation for, for the budget. Uh, again, I will, uh, just roll back, uh, just for summary purposes, and, uh, recognize that, uh, anything you see with a low role on it, this is what the city is currently operating under. Uh, what you have here is what I am proposing. And so, you'll see here, we're proposing, uh, a seventy-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollar increase in the mayor's budget. That would then put an executive assistant back in place. That's the, that's the primary, uh, function of that. Uh, if you come back down, you will see in, uh, in, uh, in the, uh, code enforcement, uh, position, you will see we are coming back and, and, and putting code enforcement back in place, uh, with leadership, so that we can do an effective job of code enforcement. Uh, I also, uh, bring your attention to, again, uh, what we're doing here with, uh, uh, the personnel office, we need a personnel director. We do not have, it's funded, that position is not funded. We cannot operate effectively without an HR director. The, 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 the laws for, I can't say, uh, especially in public safety, fire, and police are very, very unique. And we really need someone with expertise in those areas that can really help us navigate what we're doing. That is not gonna be an easy find. Uh, and so, but we need to go here and start working on this immediately. Uh, and so, that's, that's, uh, and then planning and development, uh, we want to, we want to double up on the, on, on that team there, strengthen that team, uh, polish that team up, and get us the level of talent that we need in that office, uh, so changes are necessary. Uh, so, that's, that, that, that's what I'm asking, that the council will approve the resolution that you see before you, uh, that I presented, and, uh, uh, let's see here. That you will, that you would consider and approve the resolution that is before you. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Purvis, uh, for presenting, uh, those, uh, amendment items, uh, for consideration uh, to the council. Uh, before I open it up and allow and ask for comments, uh, and discussion from our council members, uh, I want to start off by saying, again, thanks for sending that. And, uh, the reason we tense the meeting tonight was to make sure that the council provide you with the tools necessary, uh, for you to be able to do your job efficiently and effectively. Uh, and so, uh, in what you have presented to us, I understand, uh, the needs are there. Uh, and I'm hoping, uh, that this council, uh, after, uh, some discussion, uh, will be able to provide you with the necessary tools, uh, that you do need, uh, to get, uh, the job done. Uh, so, uh, at this time, I'm gonna have, open it up and allow other members of the council, uh, to provide, uh, their discussions, but please bear with me. I'm trying to do this virtually, uh, and so, I'm trying to see everybody and engage everybody and unmute people when they need to be unmuted, and all those types of things. So, please excuse me, we're in a, we're in, we're in a virtual world, and I'm trying to navigate virtually. Uh, and also, I want to, uh, say, Mayor Purvis, again, appreciate it. Uh, we have not, as a council, had an opportunity, uh, to meet as a finance committee, uh, again, as well. Uh, and so, uh, if there is some trepidation on, uh, passage of some of these items, it is simply because the finance committee has not had an opportunity, uh, to meet with you, the treasurer, uh, and other, uh, interesting parties, uh, to make sure that we're being, uh, good stewards, uh, with our money. But at this time, we're gonna open it up, and council members, uh, you may proceed. Uh, I think I speak, Troy, Councilor Harvey, uh, first, uh, you can unmute yourself. Councilor Harvey, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you. Uh, yeah, my, uh, my thoughts were to try to have a finance committee meeting, uh, possibly Monday. Uh, I wanted to try to pass out some communication on that, and see if we could possibly meet Monday. Um, if I, uh, stretched my numbers right, this is a, almost a four hundred thousand dollar increase to our current budget. Did I, did anybody else kinda stretch those numbers? Mr. Mayor, did you guys...
Yes, it's about three eighty-seven.
Okay. All right. Um... And I, and I, I don't doubt, but at all, that, that, that we very much need this. Uh, I, I just don't know that I would be in a position right now. I've got, I just, this information, I think I could probably do that. Between that money and I, I just, I don't know how I could, uh...
Oh, yes, or...
Uh, that, that may, that may be further response to you, Councilor, uh, for... The, uh, understand that, um, the conflict between the council and, uh, uh, mayor in the previous administration, uh, caused a lot of, uh, back and forth, uh, realistically. But I don't think any of us can, uh, can rationalize at this point not funding a personnel director. Uh, I don't think anyone would really, would rationalize right now having me as mayor, sitting in the office with no secretary and no executive assistant at all. And that's what, that's my situation right now, and it has been that way for these first seven days. I don't think anyone can rationalize us not having a functioning code enforcement department. Uh, and, and, and what, the numbers I'm giving you are bare bones, just to stand these things up. Uh, so, uh, I do understand what you're saying, uh, and I, I can assure you that when the finance committee meets, you are not going to get to the bottom of where we are financially. You are not gonna be able to do it. What I'm doing right now is to the best of, of our ability is to give us some tools and some people in place where we can actually put together what you need as a council to make decisions. Right now, I don't have those tools. And it's unrealistic to kind of expect me to be able to continue to move like this. And I mean, we, we, we have positions that we could fill, right? But, but I'm not comfortable trying to hire a people without an HR director. I gotta have that, I, I, I gotta, I gotta have some, you know, I... If you talk to any, any of the employees that worked in this office, who visited with me, but we tried to have meetings in the office of me... to have meetings in the office with me, my door is open. And because my door is open, there is constant interruptions. We literally can never finish a meeting. And so, I, I gotta have this help. I understand the need for the financial numbers, uh, Councilman, I need them too desperately because I gotta put together a complete balanced budget for the city itself. Uh, and so don't think for one moment that I'm going to do something or I'm doing something that's gonna prevent me from being able to put together a complete balanced budget that we can operate from in this fiscal year. My commitment to you is that if you give me the tools that I can work with, I can get you that completed proposed balanced budget that we can all begin to sit around and gnaw on and work on and work through together, and we can get that done, uh, within the next two weeks, but I gotta have some resources. I just cannot continue to operate from where we are without the people I, oh.
Yeah, I, I understand it, I, I appreciate and understand exactly where you're coming from. I guess my, I, I would beg forgiveness on my ignorance, I, I'm not even sure that I've seen the budget, I, I don't know, uh, whether there exists in the budget, all of a sudden, a, a week, we're adding three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, we'll be running a deficit. I, I, I don't know, and maybe that's my fault. Um, you know, in order for me to, to make any kind of, in order for me to set a budget to begin with, I need to see what we did in two thousand nineteen, I need to see what we've done here today in two thousand twenty. Um, you know, I'm not trying to, uh, I understand, I wanna keep you the tools that you need, um, and I'm gonna be running right there with you, I, I just don't have enough information to feel comfortable with adding four hundred thousand dollars, you know, to this budget, um, on Thursday evening and Monday, you know, tomorrow, if I had some stuff in my hands tomorrow that I could review, if I had some stuff in my hands as more to review to prepare for this meeting, I probably would have been in a position to, to make a, make an informed decision. Um.
Council, I'm confused because I was under the impression that you all, all received the amended budget, uh, that the, the city is currently operating on. It was my understanding that it was emailed to all council members. I, I received it.
I received it. I received it too.
I received it.
Probably was in my mailbox.
It was in everyone's mailbox.
Uh, for clarification, I didn't even know where our mailboxes were for our Public Works meeting today. I didn't either.
Well, it was email, it was email.
Yeah. Yeah, I did get email, but I, I specifically asked for it, uh, prior to now. I, I do have a, I do have a question, um, for you, the, the, um, the code enforcement court, was, was, was there a, um, was there an ordinance or something that separated that previously? Or that moved that from, uh, uh, from its own department under Public Works or vice versa? I remember that happening in the last administration, I just don't know if there was a vote to move that or, or how that existed, if anybody can explain that to me.
What was that?
Uh, that was, eh, uh.
Councilman Michael, Councilman Michael, somebody else, can you speak? Who was that that just asked? Uh, Councilman Randolph, Mayor Councilman Randolph.
Yeah, um, what, what happened with the code enforcement, you know, when the mayor, previous mayor decided to lay everybody off, uh, we never voted on it, it just laid off until this, this, well, you guys, you know, we got rid of the code enforcement, uh, because he did, we, the council didn't do it, and we never voted on anything, matter of fact, we voted to hire everybody back, and we stated on the number of cases, but it never happened.
Okay, so it's always been, it's on the front?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. You were, you were trying to combine the code enforcement, and put the code enforcement out into the public works, you, you were trying to put them together, uh, but again, like, like Councilman Randolph said, that, that, that flight got laid off, so, uh, but yeah, that's what he was trying to put house the code enforcement in the public work.
Okay, so that never happened, y'all never voted to do that?
Yes. Oh, that would be, of course, uh.
Yes.
If, if they leave them all, you know, that flight got laid off.
Okay, all right, I was just.
Thank you. Uh, I think I heard Councilman Thomas, they have the council, have the Councilman Thomas speak. Then we need to hear from, uh, the treasurer on this, uh, because she deals with these numbers all of the time, that I might hear from the treasurer after we have the Councilman Thomas. Go ahead, Councilman Thomas.
Yes, we did, we did take a vote, uh, about the, uh, code, um, the code enforcement.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Thomas. All right, now, uh, Treasurer Way, I see what you're doing, but I'm hoping you'll be able to unuse yours without me unusing you. Uh, I would love to hear, uh, the council would love to hear from you as well, so Treasurer Way.
Good evening, Councilman Mayor. Uh, I, I've listened, um, to the budget, uh, the mayor is proposing. Uh, I did, just for a ma- matter of clarification, I emailed everyone, passed the former, uh, council members copies of the budget, I also included in the current council members, the year end budget balance and the year to date as of November fourth for the balance of the budget, as well as a copy of the budget, so, and that was last week, there were three that bounced back, Councilman, Council President Young, Councilwoman Thomas, and I believe Councilman Randolph, and I did rescind it since it didn't come with her, everybody else marked them delivered. Um, in terms of the budget, I agree with the mayor, code enforcement, he's correct in saying that code enforcement was initially, the employees were moved into Public Works, then the layoffs happened, so they got, they were laid off to our currently back, but the office was previous, previously separated. So, I, um, um, what I'm hearing is that the mayor wants to bring that as an, uh, that, so that he can get attention to bring it as a separate, uh, department again. Uh, in terms of additional staffing, uh, I guess, uh, that would be sold up to council as to how you wa- want to, uh, um, how, how you decide to move forward on it, but, um, the position, I will speak that the H R position was the funding, um, and just even before Mayor Perkins came in, we are in dire need of an H R Director, someone who's knowledgeable and experienced, because some of the issues up here is that, um, that has affected our budget and how the, the process moved as a whole is because of some, some H R matters that were not handled, uh, correctly, and there's no flights to anyone, it just, the process was not handled correctly, so it affected our budget. Um, I don't know any other additional questions, um, that you may have, or concerns you wanna ask me about, I'm, I'll do more talking now.
Uh, Council, uh, the treasurer has provided herself, uh, if you have any additional questions, uh, you can make those questions, uh, address her down while she's willing and able, uh, to respond, uh, to those, uh, to those items. Council, if you have any additional questions for the treasurer? Any additional questions? All right, I'm gonna make a statement and then I'm gonna go around and we'll have the council, uh, if you all want to, uh, make, uh, statements, uh, if we can, uh, go ahead and do that. Um, that's why I had the opportunity, uh, to go down to City Hall, I was transacting, uh, business I had been called to do as Council President. I went to City Hall and then, uh, while I was there, I wanted to just go and stop and say hello to Chair Perkins, um, and I did, I went, uh, to his office, and he was diligently working on late Friday afternoon, uh, he was in his office, uh, and he was using the assistance of an employee that had just helped me, um, from, I guess, H R payroll. And, uh, so she was ultimately helping to help him do what he needed to, but the point I wanna say is, he needs help for, for it to function and just to be done, uh, that he needs to get done as, uh, mayor, uh, and head of the executive branch of the city. Now, um, I, I'm glad that Councilman Hallbill traded, you know, something about three hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars, I think that Mayor Perkins said, and that's a good bit of revenue that we are dealing. Well, I do have a question for, uh, the treasurer, um, you know, when you're getting ready to spend money, you need to make sure the money is there to spend. Uh, I think that's always the wise question. And, uh, so for these additional expenditures, uh, this additional three hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars for all of these different positions, and I, I believe the mayor was pushing it to try to get it that low, uh, but looking at the budget, I can tell he was really trying to push it to get it that low. But, uh, now Treasurer, uh, uh, do we have something available to, to meet these immediate needs of the mayor? Now Treasurer, I think you're on mute. Now Treasurer?
Get up.
Now Treasurer?
Uh, uh, I apologize, I was getting in my car. Um, before, before this, um, uh, for any layoffs and before the twenty nineteen budget, there was, uh, funding available for a H R person. And Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think you're trying to, uh, do anything but just go above and just increase the amount that's where it's currently, it was constantly placed before, is that correct, Speaker?
Yes, yes, you might have that number, that, that I, yeah, that's, that's.
Okay. So, 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 um, I, I definitely did say that there, there was funding available before this, there may be some areas that, that we can have to come back and reformulate the budget a later date and time, I just hadn't, uh, sat down and looked at that part of the budget, but definitely there was, there was funding in there for a H R person and what, from his, from my understanding, he's only asking to increase it to, um, have a more qualified person in, and I think that that was a topical conversation previously. So, uh, to answer the question about the H R, that definitely there was funding available for, and it should still be enough available to, uh, to reinstate that in the budget. Keep in mind, we have some one-time, um, one-time requirements, a one-time need of the city that had to happen, particularly in landfills that A D M that caused, uh, part of these amendments in the increasing budget, but after this year, we can now anticipate approximately, I think it made about two hundred thousand dollars a need in landfill next year. And there are some other items that will, uh, go away as it has been just a one-time need. So, uh, to answer your question, there is funding available for that. I had looked in every department to say, to commit to say, has the three hundred and eighty-some thousand, but I definitely know that there is funding available for that H R position, um, and, um, I don't, I, I would like to, to make a more informed decision, uh, get with the mayor and look at, uh, the other aspects, uh, of what he's requesting and to see, you know, to prepare for when twenty twenty-two comes, making sure that we'll be able to have a balanced budget, and I'm sure he's already worked that out, uh, but I, I would just like to have my team to just look, look to him, look, you know, to see what his plans are so I can, uh, you know, get, get back to council and have a, if, um, decision to say, um, absolutely yes.
Uh, President, uh, Council President Young?
Yes, sir, Mayor Perkins.
I, I, uh, I want to go back and remind, uh, members of this esteemed body of one point I made, and I said it quickly, but I think it needs to be reinforced, and that is, I recognize that with this budget amendment request, at the end of the day, within the next two to three weeks, I gotta figure out how to give, how to come up with a balanced budget overall. So I'm not doing this, uh, as a, as a gunshot from the hip. I also recognize that in order for us to avoid the kinds of pitfalls that we are having, these positions are critical. Uh, in order to get the additional funds we need, if, if we don't want to put additional tax burdens on our citizens, then our Planning and Development Department has to be beefed up. If we intend to deal with true code enforcement, in other words, not just the code, but the actual enforcement of the code, we're gonna have to strengthen that department. Uh, we cannot hire the people that we need for police and the fire department and, and Public Works in the cemetery, we cannot do an effective job of that without someone running the Personnel Department. We cannot figure out all of these lawsuits that we have that are H R related, there may be twenty of them, we can't figure this stuff out without having someone in these positions. I thought through my request, and in order for all of this to happen, I got to have some help in that office. And so this is our roll of the dice, this is a reality, this is a reality check, there may be some things that we're gonna have to cut back on the back end and in our general funding portion, but I'm convinced that the things that I'm asking for right now are necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant President. Uh, just, Councilman Thomas, um, let me ask the mayor, um, if he would give us each individual position again, along with the salary included, 'cause it, it kinda went fast for me. So if he can go over that portion again about, um...
Councilman, I, I'll do better, I will send you this document, uh, I will send this document to you, but we'll do this right quickly for you. And, uh, I do, you will, you will get this, uh, in your hand, uh, to look at the, uh, this is the mayor's office, uh, here we're looking at, uh, reinstating, well, this is, this is not the one that, hold on just a second, but they ended up out of order some kind of way, I don't know how that happened, I think you go out and find that. I don't know how that happened, guys, I apologize for that, some kind of way it ended up out of order. Uh, okay, I, I, in the mayor's office, what we're really talking about is the Executive Assistant.
Okay.
We're adding the Executive Assistant's position, uh, in the mayor's budget, that's what, that's what's happening in the mayor's office.
Okay. Executive Assistant, uh, I'm, I'm still trying to find that, okay, Executive Assistant.
Yes.
And that was the, what was the, the number that was added?
Okay, and that's what, that was the page I was looking for, and hold on a second, let me just pull this in, 'cause I got it in, in front of me, I can't, that ended up, some kind of way it ended up, I guess, some papers jammed or something was standing over, and I, and I hasted, and I have a chance to go back through, hold on just a second, the exact amount that was in that basket. Uh, they ended up out of order. Like I said, I need some help.
Seven-four dollars increase there?
Uh?
With a seven-four dollars increase, seven-four?
Um, yeah, yeah, it's, it's, uh, yeah, it's really like the fifty-two thousand plus the, uh, uh, plus the benefits. The fifty-two thousand plus the benefits is as a maximum as before. Yeah, the total amount of the budget increase for the mayor's office was seventy-four thousand and six, seventy-four. Well, I was trying to get that specific number for that position, that's, that's what, was it the fifty-two? Yes, ma'am, I think that is correct. I think that is correct. Yes. Uh, and then, uh, uh, the next one is, uh, let's see here, in Personnel, in the Personnel Department, uh, and they were taking that adjustment... Department, uh, and they were taking that adjustment, I don't know how to explain that out of order. Good Lordy mercy.
Okay, I see, I'm here, Code Enforcement Director.
Yeah, the Code Enforcement, yeah, Code Enforcement, uh, to reinstate the Code Enforcement, uh, Director, uh, we were talking about forty seven. Yeah. And, um, uh, still, I'll see the Personnel Technician, uh, Director's Technician back in, uh, it's just, uh, uh, personnel, Personnel Director, I was being added in at fifty, which is low, to be honest.
Yes, exactly.
That's- that's- that's added in at fifty. Uh, like, like, again, I'm squeezing. Uh, there is a strategy, though, to try and figure out how to do that. Uh, I was, there is something that I'm trying, an idea that I have to try and accomplish that, uh, with Personnel Department, the total amount is sixty two here, uh, yeah. I think it's in the...
Go back to that slide again.
Right here. Sixty two, five, thirty eight. And, um, what you're seeing here is a seventy eight thousand, four fifty one increase in that budget. Uh, but that includes the actual benefits associated with the person. I'll be right back.
Eight.
What was that?
Four fifty one, seventy eight, four fifty one.
That's correct, that's- that's correct. And, uh, Planning and Development, um, this is the one that you're currently operating under, and we're looking at a fifty eight, um, fifty eight thousand, three thirty nine increase here. And, uh, total of fifty eight thousand, four, four seventy six total change in the budget with the benefits.
Listen.
Uh, Councilwoman Trump, Janice Trump, Councilwoman Janice Trump.
Yes, I have a question for the Mayor.
Sure.
Uh, in the Planning and Development, the- the position that, uh, you were trying to bring back, like, a assistant with, uh, Henry Thompson, on the- on this position, did he have assistant with him?
Um, I'm not, I'm not in a position to talk about personnel placements at this time. Um, I don't think this is the appropriate venue to do that.
But, the only reason why I asked you is because you said you asked for another salary to, uh...
Exactly.
Yes, and- and, that- that was my question, that, uh, you asked, you asked for, and you said there would be a assistant to- to the Director of Planning and Development.
That's correct.
He said. So, he, that's what I'm, that's my question I was asking you. The salary that you're asking to, uh, for that department on Planning and Development, it would be covered under the, the, uh, the assistant to the Director of Planning and Development?
Yes, yes, the assistant to the- to the Director, that's correct.
Yes, and that is why I was, uh, when you said that amount would be, uh, it- it would be a, it add on increase in that department?
That's correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that I heard you clear about that. And that was my question.
You did.
I have one more question. In your Personnel, uh, in your Personnel Department, where you wanted to bring back the HR Director, and you wanted to bring back, uh, person, is it gonna be a Personnel check person?
Uh, the Personnel check, uh, position, uh, is already, that- that person is already there. That's...
Oh, so...
Yeah, that's...
Well, you, okay.
That person is already in that office.
Okay, so...
There are two, there are two people presently in that office. Uh, these are their names here.
Okay, let me see, I was trying to see, I know one.
Yeah, Olene Williams and- and- and...
Okay, well, Ms. Tomlin will be falling up under the classification as the, uh, she will be classified as the person in the Personnel Office up under the insurance witness.
Well, that is correct. There is a question about, uh, that, uh, that salary, and I mentioned that earlier, um, that increase, uh, when it happened, uh, when I spoke with her, that was a fourteen thousand dollar increase in that salary, uh, and when I spoke with, she was not aware of it. And, uh, and so, we're trying to track down what, uh, what authority did that happen? Was it a, was it a clerical error or what took place? Uh, and I still haven't gotten, gotten to the bottom of that.
Can I say this?
Yes, absolutely.
Can I say this?
Yes.
Will you, uh, will you go back and get the minutes on, on the prior, uh, council meeting, uh, I think it was the, if you go back and have a court to pull the minutes of the record, and you will find the information on, uh, what occurred to make this happen? But I think there is an error, but if you was to go back and get the minutes, uh, where we had the meeting on, uh, while we were doing our updating our Personnel Menu?
Yes.
Under the, under the classification on the jobs, uh, we- we did some updating in our Personnel Menu. And, um, there were some things that were put in the Personnel Man- Menu where there, uh, some of the jobs that, uh, that- that carried these positions were recommendations of, of a salary increase. But if you go back and get the minutes from the court and read through the minutes, then you will find exactly what you're looking for.
Uh, thank you, Council. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I have, I have a question for the Mayor.
Uh, Councilwoman, Mr. Jane.
Uh, good afternoon, Mayor.
Yes.
Uh, I just wanted to say that, you know, our project, because you do need help, you, uh, no one wants to go in, nobody working by themselves. And I think we need to look very close in what he's asking, in order to get the city back running, because I haven't been in no city you don't have a HR Director. I just don't know how in the world that happens. And I think we need to look real close. I said, I want to ask the, the Treasurer, of course, you- you stated that possibly it's money for the HR. Um, is it possible you could look real close? Because, um, some of those lines I would take it off, but I- I- I think we need to look real close, because the previous Mayor had assistant. And- and- and we leaving this man with nobody to work with, and, uh, we need to look real close tonight, because I really want a job not having anybody to work with. In order to get grass in our city, the young man is doing it now, and he- he's working by himself. He needs some help. We- we need to get more grass in here, we talking about revenue, we need to get some help. So, we need to look real close tonight and- and what he needs, and we need to get him the tools and do what he needs to do. We entrust in him, uh, to fix- fix this. So, we need to give him the tools he needs to fix this.
All right, yes, I agree. Councilwoman Jane, who else would ever speak? Was there another councilperson? Was there another? Uh, Councilwoman, Treasurer, wait, can you respond to the question from Councilwoman Miss Jane, please?
Uh, yes, um, as I said before, there was money, uh, unappropriated, uh, to cause these amounts. The- the past council comes, did make amendment, so it is, the- the question is now whether there was money, it is asking for increase and whether or not we can carry the increase. And as I said before, I could tell you, yes, right off the cuff, but these are permanent raises, and they don't need to be sustainable. They don't need to be sustainable for this year and the ni- next year moving forward. So, like I said before, you know, I can't just say, you know, we got an additional, but there- there may be times where he may have to come back and make some cuts later. So, I mean, the- the question is, um, whether or not, uh, we get, if you're asking me whether or not we have, um, money in the budget, or- or if we can afford a HR Director, Director, yes, absolutely, we can. Uh, when we talk about all the other changes, that's why I say we need to go back and look at, look at everything. I want to make sure that what I'm saying, I'm giving you an informed decision, not just telling you, yes, maybe come back later, there's treasure, then we can do all these things. Turned out, we can't do them. Um, and I- and I don't see that, you know, it being an issue without having to change or rearrange some things or, uh, or forgo some things. I just want to make sure, uh, that what I'm saying is correct. And I still want to go back to the point about the, I think we had a conversation about the insurance, uh, max budget, insurance position going into a benefits management position. I did receive the, uh, consent agenda, Councilwoman Trump, I think you shared a copy of it, this best by salary range for President Boy at the time, who took the minutes because the after, the clerk was absent. Also gave me the fee amount it afforded me, the email that was, um, in which he said it supported, uh, whatever the council voted on. So, we need to correct that, but glad it be corrected, but it wasn't an error on Treasury Department. I- I have documents, emails, and, uh, texts in which he would clarify with the former President, just clarification.
All right, thank you. Uh, I think I see, Councilwoman Jane, did you have something? Councilwoman Trump?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I thought, I had a heavy thought on me. Um, the question is, um, due to the prior, uh, mail before we, uh, had to come to this, uh, uh, removing, um, we had a lot of physicians that were in, in the Mayor's office, and, um, some of those physicians began to, people began to leave, and, um, well, HR Department were never, um, the last person that was in there was Van Dyker. And after Mr. Van Dyker left, these physicians became on field where to carry the day-to-day operation, uh, where you're saying that I know you need a HR person, I know you need your, your staff in your office. But we did have that, and, um, uh, I agree, you cannot do your day-to-day operation without these positions. So, I'm hoping that, that the Treasurer and all of us will come to where we can give you your day-to-day, uh, function, carry the day-to-day operation.
Thank you, Council. Yeah, Mr. President Young?
Yes, sir, Councilman Trump.
Uh, uh, Mayor, I- I'm pretty sure you looked at the, uh, overall budget in the past, um, before the layoff, the funding that we had coming in and- and also the- the spending that was just going out. Uh, do you ask basically about three or four employees that you're trying to replace now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now, if all I was thinking, uh, Madam Treasurer, we- we laid it off, how many employees did we lay it off back here, uh, during the layoff?
Six days.
Six days, the total six days employee count. Also, uh, Councilwoman Trump, I made a point, where we, uh, some of, uh, resigned, uh, so if you count the ones that, uh, resigned with the other job, uh, with the six days, can we, I mean, that's definitely about five or six employees that was working, uh, from just that, from the young man, which, uh, Councilwoman threw up, we had a lot of them. Uh, but you- you- you ask more about grabbing some employees that were, uh, that all together with this, the layoff, with the layoff, roughly?
Um, uh, Councilwoman Johnson, um, I guess, I think it was six days, but in- in reality, it ended up only being about four staff. Uh, that was, that was like, right, that actually got laid off, of many retired. Um, and I- I don't want us to confuse, uh, the spending of salary with the budget, because it'd be a problem, yeah, we never...
I'm not getting to that. Basically, what I'm saying is, uh, I'm just, I think the Mayor just asked for like four or five, in my, uh, four or five employees at this moment. And then also, I know that eventually I need to get some, uh, trouble workers, workers to get back on the ground and also get the city cleaned and everything, but I, but my question to you, Mayor, was that, I know you're probably, make sure you're looking into the budget to make sure that we can be able to get the workers in according to the funds that come in. You're not just going, listen, just trying to give you a layoff job at this moment, you're just trying to get it, have the funds available?
Well, again, uh, once we get the personnel in to help us at this executive level to pull off this together, um, I- I am confident that we will have a balanced budget in the next two to three weeks. That's my point. I- I've said that before, I say it again, uh, and I'm confident that, uh, that the Department May is, when we, as we pull all of this together, and we look at the wish list of the council members, because I've- I've encouraged you to go ahead and put this together, the things that you're looking at in your room, we have to set, and do some prioritizing, when we sit down and negotiate the final terms of this. Uh, but let me, let me, uh, let me, let me answer, let me answer this question by asking a question of the Treasurer. I- I hope I'm not putting you on the spot, Ray, but do you, do you know right off the top, the actual expenditure number for twenty, for the fiscal year twenty? Do- do you know how much we actually spent in twenty, um, nineteen, twenty fiscal year? If I- if I put you on the spot, I'm sorry. I had not planned on asking any questions about those.
Okay. Is that for me?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, we spent, uh, we spent about fifteen point eight, fifteen point nine million, so seventeen...
That's, 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 that's my point, and I wanted, I wanted, I wanted you to say that and not me.
Okay.
Uh, our actual expenditures last year, uh, according to the financial records we have, was about fifteen eight, almost seventeen million dollar budget. And so, I feel, that's why I am so confident that what I'm doing right now is not going to send this city in a tailspin. Quite frankly, we already in a tailspin, and I'm trying to get us out of it, uh, by getting us some talent, everything.
Uh, where, Councilman Trump?
Mayor, yes, uh, I've got several questions. On that note, uh, which Mayor Perkins just brought up, is there a current, uh, balance sheet available? Uh, this could solve, this could answer several of my questions. We've got, uh, you know, we have seventeen, we had seventeen million dollars in revenue, and we spent fifteen, then we should have two million dollars sitting in the bank somewhere. I'd be a whole lot more comfortable.
Yeah, we actually have over three.
Three, yeah. Yep. Okay, well, what, what, what do I need to do, or if you didn't see that?
Uh, actually, um, I'm in the process of, of insurance staff and- and, and Mayor Perkins, forgive me, have asked me to have this report ready for the, uh, for this year, but there was some information that I needed from tax and their, uh, their insurance staff, and we're working on that to have that tomorrow, but I can give you that information first thing in the morning. And actually, if you look at your report, it will, it will show you the actual revenues and expenditures for that year in as of, um, nine thirty, you should be able to see, uh, what was available after nine thirty in the budget. And, um, each month you will receive a report that show you chose our cash on hand. But we actually have in the general fund, a little over three million dollars.
How about current liabilities?
Uh, depending on, and as you were dealing with our AP and our payroll, uh, for this month, it'll, it'll probably be somewhere about four hundred thousand.
All right. Uh, any material, any debt?
Well, I get that we have, with the exception of, uh, warrant, is paid out of the, uh, with, uh, sinking fund money, which is, um, a hundred and seventy five hundred, paid for the mortgage, so we have an account that secures it.
Okay. And no contingent liabilities, liabilities that would be separate from personal liabilities?
Of course, absolutely. There are always contingent liabilities, but the city have numerous lawsuits.
Uh, I mean, can we put a number? I mean, I'm not, do we, when I say contingent liabilities, that do we have cash, uh, all the, showing on the balance sheet that there is a...
that there is a contingent liability? In other words, if we collect in revenue for a future period, that we will have some, some contingent liabilities on?
Well, there is, I, I, we do, there's only one instance that I can call right offhand. And that's for charter communications for our, our, those fees that we do with charter. But it's not, it's not an excessive amount. I'm thinking fees were more than about a hundred and fifteen or something annually.
Okay, so we should be, we should, I have, okay, so cash, free and clear, okay. Does that help me a little bit? Just a couple more questions if I could.
Uh, Councilwoman Harvey, this is great. Please go ahead and answer all of these questions down, so that we can.
And my question was, we keep, I don't understand why, you know, if we eliminated these positions, we pass a budget with no funding for an HR person. That doesn't make any sense to me. You know, you've got an HR person around the city. Why can't we pass a budget, what we have in place, that does not have an assistant for the mayor, doesn't have anybody in personnel, doesn't have anybody in coach? I can't wrap my head around this.
Can I, can I just speak to that a little bit? And I think the council, the council members that been here pre-scan, or firms, whatever, what we're saying. It was an understanding that we did not have a qualified person at the time for HR. And what they wanted to do is have a person that qualified, a qualified person, because there was no, the position was vacant. They were going to deploy it until the mayor found a qualified person that he was going to present it to the council. And then that way, they were going to, they were going to, they were going to allow the position available to be funded again. The secretary, I think they, they had a secretary position that's still in the, in the, in the budget. But they abolished the chief of staff position, going back to the way it, it should have been, going back to the way with staffs under the Evans administration. But unfortunately, it didn't happen.
Okay, I'm sure I understand the logic there, but I'll accept that. Okay, I'm just, just very, thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman.
Hey, Ms. uh, Ms. Treasury, Mayor, Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman.
Uh, Ms. Wayne, now, the other case that's really needed that we got, that was because of the layoff, right?
That was, yes, and services, we, the city didn't get full services after we didn't have full employment. So we lost, but we, we did gain resources.
Right, and we say, you know, all the, the assets, went along with the, uh, wear down, vehicles, uniforms, insurance, and a lot of, they, they, they money with the layoff cost. Yes, okay, that's my question.
Okay, I have a, I, I have something. I've been listening to Mrs. Wayne, Councilman Carrville, Mayor Perkins. I'm gonna make a motion that we accept his amendment, because the money is there. We need the help, and we need to do what we gotta do. So I'm gonna make a motion that we adopt the mix that the mayor has presented tonight. So he can go get busy finding a good HR person to make this city, find qualified people. And I think he is more willing, and I think he's able to find that person. And we need to just go ahead on and do what we need to do as a council. Because they are looking at us to make this city right, and the money is there. And if we had fifteen, and we had seventeen, or we spent fifteen, and now the treasurer said it was below three. I mean, we only asked for almost five hundred, so we should be good.
Second, that motion, Mr. President?
Alright, what we have here, we have a motion that was made by Councilwoman James to accept the resolution presented by Mayor Perkins regarding those budget issues and items. I'm not going to go through each one of them, but we have spoken about those. And it was properly seconded, I believe, by Councilman Michael Johnson. Now, before the motion, I saw on my screen, Treasurer, I saw where she had raised her hand or something. And so, I was, actually, I saw that before we even did the motion. So Treasurer, did you have something that you had before that was said?
No, I have my reading,珍, my sister.
I just saw when the hand was up, so I was making sure.
No, I'm not saying.
Okay. So, we've got that motion, the motion is clearly on the floor. And what I want to do before we go for roll call, is ask for the question to see if there's any debate and any discussion. And I'm also wanting to, I got a paper for the, I know, P M, and we started at six. So we need to do something one way or another regarding this issue. So at this time, I'm going to create a question, and let's have a debate.
Councilman, one, just one quick request. When I'm expected to look at these things, please don't give me these things at the meeting, expect me to make additional. I'm going to vote the affirmative on this.
Yeah, me too.
But, but don't give this to me. This is what I do for a living, and I operate in an organized fashion. I know these are special times, Mr. Mayor, I don't covet your position, you've got a hard job, I'm going to get in the next fight with you. Think that stuff ahead of time, so I can let my little analytical mind go and work on it.
Due to noted, Councilman, and that is my normal mode of operating, but like I said, I'm secretary, dishwasher, bathroom cleaner, several other things right now. I would have, I would have had a polished report with all the papers in order, and a summary sheet and all of that, if I simply had the time to do it. But just issue it that wasn't properly staffed and seated, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Harvey. Uh, Councilwoman Thomas, did you have something else to add to the debate?
No. No, but this.
Uh, Council, I'm sorry, I'll clarify. Councilwoman Jane Thomas, did you have something?
Well, I just want us to make sure that we just start and do what we need to do to move this city forward, what we need to answer and what we're also to run, okay?
Okay. Any other?
I have a question.
Please, Councilman Carmichael?
I thought I saw something in the code that we're, that we're supposed to get things, like a resolution or ordinance a week in advance before we can vote on it? And that we may have to suspend those rules? Is that, am I wrong about that?
I think the city attorney is on, he can answer that question.
Thank you, Councilman Carmichael. Uh, City Attorney Madison, are you able to speak, I'm not seeing you on the screen, but if I can find you somewhere. I see you over there, uh, yeah, how you doing, Attorney Madison?
Doing well, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Am I, is the speech in there yet? Well, I'm able to speak to it with a qualified statement, that I don't know, I haven't seen the status, that you need a week in advance notice, but you obviously need notice. I think this is what Councilman Harvey was just alluding to, on documentation. So I'll have to get you a reading on a week's notice, but you do definitely need some advance time as much as possible to, they would consider all of this resolutions, that documentation otherwise.
But there's nothing in the code that says we cannot vote on something that's brought up, like, in terms of ordinances, right?
There's not an ordinance, but there is, there's a requirement, there's a first read being made on an ordinance, and then a second read. But I'm not aware of a week's notice on a resolution, I'll do the diligence on that and get back to the entire council as well.
And how soon can we get that answer? Because evidently, we're in dire, dire need of this, of these positions for the mayor. So we will probably need to know that tonight.
Well, give me, give me, I might even just get it to you right now. Let me, let me, uh, give myself an, I'm not getting it, I just, I'm just, I'm just.
Look, 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 the president. Yeah, Councilman Randolph.
Uh, uh, Councilman Carmichael, can you tell us where you got your information from? Because a lot of them.
That's alright.
I'm trying to look it up in Unicode now.
Okay, because Unicode and, and our codes are different, you know, we, we got some laws that, uh, that, that's not part of Unicode. But, um, for revolution, I never heard of, um, that you have to have a week notice, notification. But in the past, with the council, also, we tried to give you, any kind of, you bring up something about spending. We must get prior notice before the council meeting. So we normally talk about it in work session, but since we didn't have a work session, I, I just, you know, this is our first time talking about it. Anytime we deal with money, spending money, we, we, we talk about it in work sessions, then we come back. No one, no one ever go on spending on the day of.
Thank you for that, Councilman Randolph, as you all were discussing, I was remembering the training that we went through. There were some in the first about when you want to spend your money, there's certain things that have to be done. But the motion, you presently on the floor, that we have, and the author of the motion, I believe, was Councilman Johnson?
Right.
Yes, Councilman, Councilwoman James, Councilwoman James, you were the author of this motion. The city attorney is currently looking for a response to see if there's, if this is a legal action. We do not want to take a vote that is illegal. We want to be, uh, uh, correct. So at this time, when they made objection from the author of the motion to just table until we actually get some kind of clarify responsibility. I'm not trying to speak too soon, but seems like the council wants you.
Got it right. I'm sorry to interrupt, I got it right here.
Okay, go ahead.
All ordinances, resolutions, or propositions submitted to the council is required. The expenditure of money shall lie over and affect dating, provided that such ordinances, resolutions, or propositions may be considered earlier by unanimous consent of the council. And provided further that this rule shall not apply to the current expenses of or contracts previously made with irregular salaries of officers or wages of employees of the city.
Say it, Councilman Carmichael. It requires regarding Councilman Carmichael's statement of the law.
Mr. Randolph?
Yes, let's hear from the attorney.
Let's, let's, yeah, let's hear from the attorney.
That's, that's section two dash twenty-nine, Attorney Madison.
Why are you waiting on the attorney? I thought I heard Councilman Carmichael suggest a suspension of the rule so that you could move forward. I didn't hear him tell you that you were not going to vote, that you could not vote.
Right.
Was that a motion to suspend the rule to this point?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, Councilman Carmichael.
Yes, I was saying that according to this, by unanimous consent of the council, we can suspend the rules and vote on this, but we have to do that first.
Right, thank you. With that said, the chair will entertain a discussion on unanimous consent to allow us to go forward with said motion.
I approve, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Suspend the rule.
Alright, so we can do this by unanimous consent. Is there any objection from any member of the council to proceed with voting on the motion submitted by Councilwoman Lisa James?
Do you need to sit down, Mr. Johnson?
No, I don't need, we're doing a unanimous consent, so.
Yes, okay.
Obviously, no objection, no objection from anyone, any objection. Alright, so we agreed, and let the record be blessed, that by unanimous consent, we are agreed to now vote on the motion originally submitted by Councilwoman Lisa James. And that was properly seconded by Councilman Michael Johnson. Alright, continue debate, if there is further debate, if there is further debate. But I would like to make a statement, and then we're going to proceed with the roll call. I believe what we are attempting to do is a very good start. We are attempting to work together. We have listened to our mayor, and he has presented the needs of the city. And we have taken those needs into our consideration. And also, weighed our responsibility of being good stewardship with the city's problems. So I appreciate the healthy discussion and the busy discussion, but I also appreciate the fact that they have stated, when we make these findings, it will be the same, the same information beforehand, so that we can make an informed decision. All of that is well said and good. But I believe we are doing what the people put us up here to do, and that is address problems and work things out. Now, usually, when we get ready to vote, I would vote in the next, because I haven't had a chance to say anything. But I'm operating in good faith, and I believe that Mayor Perkins is operating in good faith as well. And it's stated to us, and I said earlier, I know the needs for employees down there, I've seen it for myself. So I'm going to get what I usually do in supporting that motion. But I am hoping that this is the beginning of our walking step. With that said, I am going to ask the, uh, court to provide us with the roll call, that of course.
Yes, sir, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, now, Court.
Thank you. President Young?
Yes.
Councilwoman Carrville?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Carmichael?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jane?
Yes.
Councilman Randolph?
Yes.
Councilman Jimison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Now, Court, can you read off the results of standoff, please?
Unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you. Thank you, Council, for your due diligence. And we still will at another time, uh, here in front of our attorney again. But Councilwoman Carmichael, thank you for bringing up that Unicode provision. Council, thank you for working on your extra thing to try to get this solved for the people, there's a need, and we're trying to be ready. Alright, now, Mayor Perkins, will you please proceed with your other item, sir?
Uh, the second item of the agenda is Hurricane Zeta, just a briefing. And I did indicate in my opening statement that I am not looking for a decision on anything else from the council this evening. And so I want to thank the council for the vote of confidence and the support you're providing the administrative side of government, because it is needed. And I look forward to continuing working together with council to make this happen. Moving forward, on another positive note, on the administrative side, we met with the Public Works Committee today, led by Councilman Carmichael. And we had a very good conversation, very detailed discussion about where we are with Hurricane Zeta. I'm not going to steal you under, uh, the committee chair, Carmichael. But I will say just a couple of things, just because we have the public's attention, and I think they want to hear from us about this as frequently as possible. There are two tracks that we are going down. One, a track where we are tied to the state, and the state is tied to the federal government, specific to FEMA. This issue of trying to make sure that, that we get reimbursed for the monies that we spend on this cleanup, that's a key piece. Remember the word reimbursement, because if we don't do this properly, then we could end up not getting our reimbursements. And so that's the key piece of this. It is not that administration side, we're not doing anything. Let the meeting feeling good, that the committee understands, the council committee understands, that we are in fact doing our due diligence. The engineer, our city engineers, working feverishly to get things done. But the real- But the reality is, at, at a level that we cannot control, is that the president has not signed the governor's, uh, disaster relief, uh, declaration. And until that happens, the government is not going to release counties, uh, with monies and cities with monies that are to be reimbursed through, example, from the federal government without that happening, and we have no control over that. We heard different dates, the next week, next two weeks, so that's one track that we are going down. There's another track, uh, we have met with, uh, a major mega contractor to, uh, to, to help us get this stuff up. But we're gonna have to let an RMP, we're gonna have to do a request proposal, uh, I've gotten the assurances from the folks that are working on that, that we can get that done within the next week. I'll get the RMP done, we're gonna be working under the state public works laws, uh, and procedures for getting that done, and so the timeline for getting it done, we can expedite. And we're gonna go forward, get that contract, uh, uh, let, if they, if the bid let, select the bids, select the vendor, uh, and, uh, according to, uh, the conversation that we had in the meeting, uh, the council will be fully aware, you will be shared with the bid information, the specifications, and we will, uh, let you know the recommendation of the engineer, who will be vetting, uh, those companies, because it is a technical issue, and we do need the council of, of technical folks to help us with that process. So, that is underway, just wanted to let people know that this is happening. Uh, it is best that we do it efficiently and not fast, I know we want this trash out of, out of our streets, I want it, uh, oh, I, I want it out of my yard, you understand? But we, but we, but we need to do this the right way to make sure that we get the money back that we are spending, and so that's what we are, that's what we're focused on. The next point I wanted to just mention to you, uh, and again, I'm not looking for any, uh, and, and in fact, I'm gonna withdraw the even question for comments in the end, in the interest of time. Uh, but I would like to suggest or ask, uh, uh, the council if it would take a careful look at the Coachman decision, uh, as it relates to appointment powers. Uh, the Supreme Court rule, uh, uh, in favor of Coachman, Mayor Coachman, I think it was Mayor Midfield at the time when they had this discussion. And, uh, uh, Council President Young, you are an attorney, uh, let me, let me put you on the spot a moment, uh, does an attorney general's opinion supersede a Supreme Court, uh, decision?
Uh, an attorney general's opinion is only persuasive authority, it is not true authority. Uh, the courts are the ones that, you know, interpret our different laws, but all an attorney general's opinion is, is persuasive authority.
That's correct, that, we, we are in agreement, and so, uh, what we have here, what, what has happened in Selma, is we have allowed an attorney general's opinion to supersede a Supreme Court ruling. And so, I would encourage the council to do that due diligence, to look at that carefully, so that we can resolve this issue. There are legal precedents, uh, for resolving this and, and, and complying with the state law as we move forward. I just want to mention that, and hopefully, when we have this discussion about the appointment powers, we would look at the legal moron and difficult challenges that are, that we are faced with, when we don't do this the right way. Uh, the next thing that I would mention to council is the ordinance authorizing the council president to sign contracts. I think the law is clear on that, uh, we breached, uh, the span of control, we breached the checks and balances, and the council has the authority to, uh, to, uh, to, uh, determine contracts, to approve contracts, to sign contracts, uh, without, uh, without the mayor's, uh, uh, involvement, uh, and, and most certainly, uh, as the council moves forward, approve contracts. The mayor has the authority to veto, the council has the authority to come back with a super majority vote and overturn the veto. There are processes in place already to solve the issues that our city government's been challenged with, and I'm simply asking and suggesting that as we move forward, we play by the rules of the game and not make our moves as we go. Those are my comments, again, thank you, council, uh, for your, your, uh, your, uh, your, the support of the recommendation for funding for these departments, thank you so much.
Okay, did I see the hand of, of one of the council, uh, Councilman Christie Thomas?
No.
Did you have some, okay, did any other council member have any comment? Any other council member? Which council? Okay, that's Councilman Randolph, yes, sir. Councilman Randolph? Councilman Randolph? I heard it for a second, then it's, yes, Councilman Randolph? Yes, sir.
I, I just want to say one thing, uh, about each member of the different committees. Uh, the chair does not have any power on his own, it's the whole committee. So, uh, a lot of times you catch people thinking, because they're chair of a committee, where he's there, where she's there, go, it's the whole committee. Uh, so your committee had to vote on a recommendation to bring back to the council as a whole, no one person is, can make that decision. I just want to share that with you.
Thank you, Councilman Randolph, for that. Uh, were there any other comments from members of the council?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes, sir, Councilman Johnson.
I, I just want to thank each and every council, I think we have productive, I want to thank the mayor for coming on and just explaining everything to the council people, so we can get a good understanding of where to move forward. In the year, we've been sitting back, uh, uh, for four years now, and then getting that in the conference, that we should have got accomplished. But now, tonight was a productive night, and I'm so grateful that all the council and the mayor, all those guys together, to take the right decisions to help the parents go out, move forward with the things that they need, and I just want to thank you, Mr. President. Thanks to each and every council, and thanks to the mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Johnson. Uh, are there any other comments from members of the council?
I have a question. I have a question, Carmichael, and then Councilwoman James, please, Councilman Carmichael.
Uh, uh, Councilman Randolph, can you send me the information that you just stated, uh, where it's outlined in our text, please, sir?
That was a request, uh, Councilman Randolph, uh, and perhaps you and him can further.
Okay, yeah, 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 cause, um, this, this, this is all, one person cannot, just like the president of the council, he cannot, he's not a, uh, one man show, just the whole body as a whole. So, just because you, uh, the chairman of committee, you're just the chairman. They take a majority of the people on the, on your committee to bring something back to us. Cause you might get mad if they're, well, let's vote on, uh, paving Second Avenue, and your committee said, no, we don't want to pave Second Avenue, we want to, uh, do Broad Street. When the majority vote on, that will happen.
Alright, thank you, Councilman Randolph, and thank you, Councilman Carmichael, uh, because that's not an issue that's going to be addressed under the mayor's report? I believe that is a question that we can have at another time, because we don't have many, many things discussed, many, many things. So, uh, this is not a business, let's, uh, move on. Um, what I would like to say in the discussion. I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry, I'll put it back, please, I'm so sorry.
I just want to, I just want to thank the council, and I, I know that we're in good hands with, um, Mayor Perkins being, um, Matt Maddie, Genius, and Will Harvey being one also. I, I think we're gonna be in good hands like all states, and I think the night shows unity with our council, and our, the citizens see this. So, I just want to say thank you, guys, and I, I think we're gonna have a good working relationship, and we're gonna move the city forward.
Thank you for that. Any other, uh, comments from any of the other council members?
I have one, uh, Councilwoman. I would like to tell all of my, um, elected officials, always remember that, uh, we always have our tools, on any situation that dealing with our city, government, cause when we went to orientation, the ones that went, we need these handbooks, when it come on the, the season on what we need to do by meetings and different things, all of this is laid out in here, and it's all other than this later on. So, we get our book, and we start looking up what we need to know, and we learn how to use it to, to run our city.
Alright, any other statements from any other of the members of the council? Alright, important things, sir, that. I'm sorry.
I'm telling you, I don't mind making comments for someone. So, this gets to.
Thanks, thanks. Yes, Perkins, did you have anything under, anything else under your report that you need to provide?
I'm done, thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Uh, now, uh, I will conclude briefly, and I think we'll move on to, uh, I believe announcements was the next thing on the agenda, but before we do those announcements, I quickly want to say, uh, thank you for working through that and providing the mayor with some of the tools that he needs, uh, to get the job done. Thank you, council, for coming together, and that is quite positive, that the executive branch, the mayor and the council can work together, and they can talk things out, and they can get things done. Mayor Perkins, thank you for bringing up those three other items, uh, those, yeah, those three other items, I think that you mentioned as well, and, uh, of course, you know, I have an attorney, and you posed a question about the state's opinion and Supreme Court law, and I responded that, uh, but I did not be able to give a full detail response, because there is also state law out there as well. And you realize that I'm talking in front of the discussing state law and opinion, that you like to talk about that kind of stuff. Uh, but we've got Milton B. Boy, and we got some other stuff out there in substantial, uh, so we're gonna work through that appointment power issue, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna work through that just. We can work together, go tonight, we can work together, also, Dave, and the city of Selma is worth a lot more than a turf war. It's worth a lot more than turf, and I am praying and hoping that this council continues to operate in this spirit, and not get bogged down in fights that have taken away the last forty years, okay, forty years in the wilderness, it's time to come out. And I am hoping, and I am thankful for the spirit of the mayor tonight, and the spirit of this council, as we operate in unity and not disorder. So, with that said, we're going to proceed and move on to any announcements that need to be taken, that need to take place at this time, any announcements, council, any announcements. Very good. Let us remember that on next Thursday, we will have a work session, and that notice will be provided out, uh, to the public soon. And perhaps early next week, for those our committee made needs, because remember, we are trying to make sure we follow the structure. Your committee needs, your committee presents something by work session, and then we vote on it at council meeting. We want to restore structure and get rid of dysfunction. So, let us remember to do those things as we prepare to move on. Work session next Thursday, six o'clock, and if you have a committee meeting, you must get that out, uh, with the proper notice, and our council secretary will be glad to assist you in getting those notes out. Thank you, council, if there is no further, if there are no further items on our agenda, the last thing on our agenda is leaving the truck, so if there's. Although, we don't even have to do that, we, we stand the truck, there's no other thing, thank you, council, I'm late.
I hate you all so much.
Good night.